Virtual Planning Commission of March first, twenty twenty two. The current Virtual Planning Commission meeting format has been undertaken by the City of Daly City in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The Planning Commission thanks the public for its participation in the virtual meeting format. It is our intention that the Commission receive any and all comments that may that you may wish to make for the land use proposals being considered tonight. If you would like to comment, please visit the website address that is on the screen and raise your hand during the public hearing portion of the item for which you wish to speak. Thank you. So we'll call.
No, don't we have to have the pledge hearing? You want to do that?
Okay, do it now. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Public for which it stands.
Gary. Now we'll call.
Present.
Pacheco.
Present.
Raulano.
Here.
Villanueva.
Here.
And Satori is not here.
So next would be the approval of the minutes. Of October fifth to twenty twenty one and of December seventh, twenty twenty one.
I move that they be approved as written.
Do we have a second? I have a second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so it's approved. So, and I just, just read item number one. Okay, so item number one, Michael, what, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna mess up your name, Michael.
Okay.
Um, but use permit U P R two, 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 one, five, five, three, six. Coastal development permit to remove landfill waste from the upper north canyon face estimated to be on average ten feet deep below existing grade. A drainage sw- swell will be constructed to guide drainage away from the area. Excavated materials will be disposed on site at disposal cell located approximately point two five miles to the south. The area will be hydro seeded upon completion. Take it away.
Thank you, Commissioner Villanueva. This is an item that's a proposal by the City of Daly City for some work at the Muscle Rock site located here, of course, in Daly City. This is a site location map. The proposed site maintenance improvements include the removal of landfill waste from the upper north canyon face estimated to be an average of ten feet below existing grade. Uh, the city proposes to dispose the excavated materials on site at the disposal cell located approximately a quarter mile to the south and construct a drainage swell to guide drainage way from the area. Upon completion, these areas will be hydro seeded. The uh, city has determined that a coastal development permit, or at least an amendment to an existing permit is necessary, um, which triggers, of course, the planning commission hearing. Notice was sent to all properties within three hundred feet of the property boundaries and all residents within one hundred feet of the boundary as well. This is a graphic of the maintenance plan, is what we call it. Basically shows what's going to be done. The uh, project limit line where the waste is being removed is shown here. Um, it was discovered, I believe, in January that there was some sloughing of this hillside and essentially uh, trash that's been, um, for those of you who are not familiar with what Muscle Rock is, is it's a closed landfill site. In the fifty, sixties and seventies, the site was used for garbage disposal and it was covered with earth and has remained in this condition. City of Daly City is responsible for maintaining that, making sure that, of course, this trash doesn't find its way into the ocean, and that's the whole purpose for this work. So probably should have provided some background there. That's essentially what this project is. And so anyway, um, I think a couple months ago, there was, uh, it was found that, uh, we did have some sloughing of the bluffs that was occurring and trash was being exposed. City became aware of this and undertook action to, uh, essentially move the trash from one part of the site away from where it's left down the bluff. That's what we're looking at here. We have bluff. This is the ocean at the bottom of the screen. And, um, this is the bluff top where the, uh, work is being undertaken. And it's being, uh, moved essentially to another area here. And that's, that's essentially what this coastal development permit allows for is the movement of this earth material, the garbage from one portion of the site to the other. Some drainage work and then hydro seeding. There's some of the site photos of what the, uh, that sloughing is what I call it. I don't know if that's the correct term. By the way, our engineering, public work staff are here also to answer any questions. So they can also correct anything I say wrong. I, I call this, uh, sloughing of the bluff top. And this is the trash that's being exposed. And so this is why we're undertaking this, to stop this from happening and move this material to another part of the site so that it doesn't enter the ocean. Uh, these are some site photos of the area. And this is where that, that previous photo is just a close up of this area. This is where that sloughing is occurring. Is that even a word? I'm not sure I made, might have made that.
Can I say, is that a word? Cute.
Uh, Michael, I know that's where you're saying that is, but can you go back? Yeah, right there at the bottom, all that. Is that garbage as well?
No, I don't believe so. Kevin Spear, the city engineer is present. He can correct me if I'm wrong. I, I don't know that there's trash actually inside this. I think it's more on the up slope area.
So, so may I ask, um, I, I, I remember what the coma garbage, uh, or, or dump used to be like, you could see it. They'd like roll dirt over it and mix it and mix it and whatever. So was garbage just on the top layer and it was just with time, it's, the dirt's falling away? I mean, I'm just trying to understand it. And, and when we, well, I'm seeing it from this angle, you can see it, but how far, how far wide is this? Is this something that you're just gonna mitigate at it as it comes uh, to view, or is that something that needs to be addressed all the way across wherever, how many?
I'm actually gonna let Kevin answer that question. He's familiar with the city's program to mitigate this issue. So I think he's by far the most qualified to answer that.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer it. So at this time, um, all these observations are pretty recent. So these photos you may have noticed, and they were dated about mid-January. So currently regarding kind of long-term plans for the area, um, we're actually, um, initiating consultant studies to try and determine uh, more precisely what's going on out here. But for now, the scope that this is speaking to is, um, really kind of an immediate pullback of waste. Um, yes, sloughing is a appropriate term for, uh, earth materials falling down. But that's the scope at this point, um, to kind of mitigate the immediate condition, which was the fact that waste was visible at the top and to start pulling it back while we initiate some of these more, um, in-depth technical studies.
Okay, does that answer your question, Teresa? You're muted.
Yeah, I was trying to, so you don't hear background noise. Um, I was just trying to figure out, um, it, are, are what we are doing with the city, are we dealing with issues as they come up? Because this is January and then we had all that big storm and wind and garbage. I mean, remember, uh, like a month ago? So this potentially could be worse, right? Obviously, that's what you guys want to do, mitigate this, fix this, and the best you can, take whatever you need to take out and all that. My, I guess my concern is, and, and just asking is how deep? Cause it looks, it's pretty, it's deep, you know? So how deep is it? And currently, what's the, the area that you're working on? And again, if I'm looking, yeah, if I'm, yeah, I see that. So you're doing all that? And is that where Muscle Rock was? I mean, or is just that little section or? I mean, I can't really tell.
Yeah, what we, what we don't show here is the limits of the actual refuse. Um, and that begins approximately at the edge of the bluff that you see there. So that red area where we're actually pulling back materials, that is kind of the ocean side or the western limit of the refuse. From there, it actually heads kind of up the page in a giant bowl. Um, so all the, the lighter material you see there, that's kind of the landslide or land movement that we were looking up at in the prior photo for a while there. So as far as what we're doing now, it's really to mitigate this sort of immediate issue that's, uh, become evident in the red area. And the rest of it, and I wish I had more specific answers about kind of the long-term needs here and the big picture for what might be going on here. Um, we do need to initiate those consultant studies to really tell us, you know, they'll look at kind of these, um, aerial historic photos and kind of study this from a ju- technical perspective to find out answers to those exact questions.
Um, Kevin?
Yes.
Is it, Kevin, is it safe to say that this will be a continuing problem? Cause these, uh, cliffs are gonna continue to slough down into the ocean, cause this is an emerging coastline.
That, yeah, so that is definitely, um, evident along the coast and all coast that as the waves start hitting soil, it erodes over time, and that is definitely a condition that's been seen up and down this part of the coast. And so, yes, um, this will continue up and down the coast. And, uh, as far as how quickly that'll continue, um, really it remains to be seen, um, and studied. Um, sometimes you hear things like nothing happens, uh, until all of a sudden a lot of mass moves at once, or some coastlines may see minimal, um, erosion each year. It really varies. And so those, um, we have, I think, uh, some good consulting teams coming on board that will know, uh, how to provide that sort of information.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I was gonna ask a question. So from the bottom there, I see Michael's cursor, but from the bottom of that photo where it looks like that's where the beach is? Is that correct? Am I kind of looking at it right?
Yes.
Yeah. And then from there up, how far, how far is that? How far are we looking?
Um, that's on the order of maybe three hundred feet up the page. And it's probably a vertical height of maybe hundred fifty to two hundred feet. So this whole area, it's a kind of an interesting perspective. It's probably, you could draw a square around this, maybe two hundred, uh, by two hundred or two fifty by two fifty, something like that.
I, for one, I'm happy you guys are, we'd hate to see that going into the ocean, so. It's great. Yeah, it's great that you guys are working on that.
And I second that too. I really, uh, I like the fact that, you know, you're, that you're paying attention to this, so it doesn't really affect the, so it does not affect the environment. You know, and that, that's a big thing nowadays.
So just to finish up with the presentation, so the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the City Council about approving the coastal development permit necessary to undertake this mitigation work. Um, the projects consistent with the city's coastal development program, um, for these reasons on the screen, there's no buildings or structures that are proposed, no foundations, footings. Public access to the coast is not impeded. Um, it's consistent with our zoning ordinance, a, uh, all the grading that's occurring, it meets the requirements of the state and city. There's no adverse effect on the immediate site or any of the adjacent properties. There's no endangerment of life or anything like that. Um, or endangerment of any, or there's no requirement for protective structures to undertake this work either, so. Um, the project's fully consistent with the coastal development program. Um, it's exempt from CEQA restoration of damaged structures. And, uh, the staff is recommending the Planning Commission forward a recommendation to the City Council for approval of the coastal development permit. And there is a possibility that this'll, um, morph into a amendment to an existing uh, permit the city holds. Um, we're assessing that right now, but the essence of, um, what we're holding a hearing for here tonight is that the Planning Commission recommend the City Council grant approval of a C D P and authorize the, uh, work, or, you know, granted a, a permit to formally, um, be permitted, so. If there's any other questions, of course, you can answer them. That concludes my presentation.
I had a question. I, I just wanted to know more about hydro seeding. Like, what is that process and I guess what's the purpose? What is it actually? And what the process is?
Kevin, I don't know if you want to answer that.
Yeah, I can answer that. Um, hydro seeding is a way to, uh, reestablish vegetation. Um, this work is gonna really kind of create bare soil when it's all done. And since there was vegetation before, at the end, the contractor would, um, kind of spray the seed mix and then establish more vegetation to help hold the soil together.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any other comments or questions?
I have none.
No.
Can we open for public hearing?
We don't have any public speakers that I can see, correct Tatum?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Motion carried to close the public hearing.
How about all those in favor?
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do, and then now am I redoing the adopt the findings? Is that, what's next? Is there, uh, is there anyone that would like to, you know, have a motion to adopt the finding?
I move we adopt the findings as outlined herein.
I second that.
What are we supposed to say?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, um, and then is there a motion to affirm the environmental assessment? Is that next? Am I looking at the one?
You're in, you're in number two. You should be on five and number one.
No, but you're looking for a motion to affirm the environmental assessment.
Correct.
Yeah.
I make the motion.
But that's, that's part of the zoning change, not the not the use permit.
No, there's an environment, there should be an environmental assessment.
Oh, cause it's not in my recommended action list. Okay.
Yeah, it's not on the staff report, but it is a required finding. So if we could make the motion.
So moved then.
I made a motion and you seconded it, Rick?
Of course, I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and then next would be someone to recommend the approval of the use permit U P R two, 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 one, five, five, three, six. Coastal development permit, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report of March first.
So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't we have to have a roll call, Tatum?
I'll do the roll, roll call. Crump?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Raulano?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye. Moving to the second item. Zone change, Z C zero, one, two, two, five, four, seven, seven, application by the City of Daly City to amend Title seventeen of the Daly City Municipal Code zoning to establish locational standards for smoke shops and tobacco stores. The project is, is exempt from the California Quality Act CEQA in, in accordance with CEQA Guidelines Section one, five, zero, six, one, B, three, no potential for significant environmental effect. Zone change, Z, Z, Z C zero, one, two, two, one, five, four, seven, seven.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair. This is a, again, a zone change, um, that would, uh, so his own text amendment, actually, that would, um, add clauses to the zoning ordinance that would establish, again, locational standards for smoke shops and tobacco stores. Um, the, um, City Council has expressed some interest in regulating smoke shops and tobacco stores. Uh, the councils, um, indicated that there's some interest in public health in this. Um, this is, uh, probably not a surprise, uh, I mean, uh, long known, the, you know, the ill impacts of, you know, smoking and whatnot. So, um, there's, this is a little bit of a uh, different direction in, in terms of regulating, like, um, as opposed to indoor smoking, this regulates the sale of uh, the, um, product itself and regulates the location of tobacco stores in Daly City. So that's how it's different from previous regulations that we have, regulations that are already on the books. There's a thought that the expansion of smoke shops and tobacco stores, um, do result in undesirable impacts. And, um, among these impacts are increased potential, uh, tobacco sales to minors, greater opportunity for the sale of illegal drug paraphernalia that is marketed as tobacco paraphernalia and heightened risk of the negative aesthetic impacts, loss of property values, um, resident, residential neighborhoods and businesses near such uses. So those are our stated reasons for this regulation. Um, the, uh, before we start regulating something, we have to define what it is. And I'm just gonna read this verbatim, and then we've actually incorporated this as a definition. Smoke shop is an establishment primarily dedicated to the display sale, distribution, delivery, offering, furnishing or marketing of tobacco, tobacco products or tobacco paraphernalia. Grocery store, supermarket, convenience store, similar retail use that only sells conventional cigar cigarettes or tobacco as an ancillary sale should not be defined as a smoke shop and tobacco storage shall not be subject to restrictions currently being proposed. So if, for example, Safeway, I don't know if they even sell tobacco anymore, but if they did, they would not be subject to this. Um, it's not a major component of what, um, grocery store sells. These are, um, stores that are only in the business of, uh, selling the tobacco product and the paraphernalia related to consuming it, so. Um, the, um, specific proposals that we are proposing to the zoning ordinance are adding definitions to the zoning ordinance for smoke shop and tobacco stores, as I just read. We needed to find some other things, and they're identified in the staff report. I'm not gonna read those also, but, um, it's important to because some, i- in, in the administration of this piece of code, we have to be very specific about what we're regulated. So there's ancillary sale, tobacco, tobacco paraphernalia, tobacco product and e-cigarettes, they're all defined, and those definitions are provided in the Planning Commission staff report. The, um, Planning Commission would be recommending the City Council amend, uh, chapters of the zoning ordinance that would allow, uh, smoke shops and tobacco store businesses, that's requiring free use permit. Require that smoke shops and tobacco stores proposed within any planned developments and be subject to the same requirements in the following zones. Commercial office zone, the bar office commercial zone, C one and C two, the light and heavy commercial zones respectively. And several Sullivan corridor specific plan districts which are, I mean, this area around City Hall and to the south moving toward, um, uh, along the Sullivan Avenue corridor. An important fact, there were a proposal in this though, is that while stores would be allowed by right, and that's number three, they would be subject to locational standards, and that's sort of the meat of this regulation for smoke shops and tobacco stores. And there would be a requirement that there would be a one thousand foot minimum distance between new smoke shops and tobacco stores and existing such businesses. And as well as any new businesses. So there wouldn't have to be a thousand, uh, foot buffer between them. Um, there are, are identified nine smoke shops in Daly City. I won't go through each one of these, but a lot of them are on Mission Street, as you can tell. There is also one, uh, Washington Street on the other side of two eighty from, um, my location here at City Hall. And there, uh, there's one on, uh, in Westlake Shopping Center, and then there's one at, uh, twenty-three ninety-four, University. I'm not exactly sure where that is, but, um, anyway, there are nine total. When we math those, uh, locations, we showed this, uh, this is basically the thousand foot radius circle from each of those locations actually showing, and the true Y. But essentially, um, as you can tell, their concentration is around Mission Street. Oh, and there's, I guess, the one near, using it, University must be here, near here, near, here, near City Hall. And there's also one, uh, in, again, Westlake Shopping Center. So this is the existing situation. A one thousand foot separation requirement would essentially preclude, um, any more on Mission Street. Of course, we have this area mission that um, probably, you know, if you're right in the middle of it, maybe you could get another one. Um, new smoke shop could open up at Skyline Plaza though, um, anywhere in the ceremony area. There's none in that area. Um, so just trying to describe exactly what, um, the separation requirement would yield, um, the Bay Shore neighborhood, um, would, there's none there. So a, a new store could locate there under this. Um, but essentially, uh, precludes any more, um, you know, along Mission Street, maybe, maybe the exception of maybe one more. So that's what the, uh, city staff is proposing at this point. And of course, um, the planning commissions welcome to make any recommendations or ask any questions about this that it, um, seems necessary. The proposal is exempt from CEQA. We are recommending the approval of this own change, um, the amendment to the zoning ordinance to incorporate, uh, locational standards. If there's any questions, we can answer them for you.
Commissioner, do you have any questions?
No.
No.
Um, it, it, just a question, quick question. The thousand feet, was that just a just a normal what they use in other cities? Or is that something you guys came up with? You know, the distance between, I mean, i- it, it sounds a lot, but when you drive on Mission Street, it feels like they're like boom, 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 boom. All Mission Street. You know, it just, it's interesting. I, I would, I personally, I would just hate to see just one more in that little square, and I'm sure people who are business owners are saying, well, you know, I have a right like everybody else, but when, when their product affects, po- potentially affects, you know, young people and, and it's addicting and it causes cancer and let's go down the line. I just would rather see less than more. That's my own opinion.
Little question.
Saying. Yeah, I'd hate to see one more on Mission Street is all I'm saying. That's all. I mean, I see that where the potential is, where you're saying. Yeah, but it would be a shame. Anyway, that's it. I'll get off my soapbox.
That, that's a quick question. So if an existing smoke shop were to close and then a new business owner comes in, can they essentially do they have to reapply or they're kind of grandfathered in and can continue the smoke shop business? and can continue the smoke shop business?
No, they'd be existing stores would be grandfathered in.
Got it.
As long as they're legal and they'll hold a city business license.
If the license were to expire, though, and someone came in later, I don't think that address would be held for them.
No, no, usually, yeah, that's a, it's actually a good question. I mean, I don't know if we want to do a six-month sort of thing, but uh or none, we, we, it's, it's actually a good question, and maybe we should address that in um the ordinance.
Meaning when the license expires, can they renew it?
Right. Can another business out of time after which they close, can somebody come, I would, I would say that's probably zero days, right?
Yeah, I I would recommend that you do that if that's the intention is that, because if they let their permit expire, they're essentially applying for a new one. I mean, it is a kind of a policy decision, but legally, once it expires, it's a whole new permit, a whole new application, the timeline starts then. So it makes sense just to leave it that way. If they let it expire, then it's a whole new application and it's subject to the new regulations.
So question, let's say they didn't let it, let's say someone owns it and then they sell it to someone else.
That's what Michael was saying, then, then it would continue to be grandfathered in. It would, if it's a continuous use, then it would be difficult to
Right.
remove that. But once they let it lapse and it's no longer a continuing use, it's, it would be a whole new timeline and they'd be subject to the new regulations.
Yeah.
That's how it's written now, anyway.
If somebody was to sell their business and they were to, we might want to get some specificity in the ordinance. If somebody was to sell a business and the new owner wasn't ready to take possession of, there was some sort of a time lapse in actual operation. I would imagine that would be allowed um for some amount of time.
Okay, but can't you say that 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 license is non-transferable?
You could say that.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of ran into something similar where it's kind of, you know, you're purchasing a business and the seller is saying, oh, he purchases and everything's transferable, but then I learn like, no, it's not, I have to file my own license and do the whole thing all on my own. So, I mean, if you really, if the city is really that concerned about, you know, um, managing the amount of, you know, smoke shops, then, you know, that's something to consider. I just don't, is that something that we would, I don't know, uh, include tonight or to go to council or?
Well, I think it is something that um you can bring up as an issue and we can, you can recommend that the city staff, um, uh, you know, take a look at that before it comes to city council and we can have a better answer. A recommendation to, you know, also, I mean, you can amongst yourselves decide. If, for example, Velba, you mentioned, you know, that's non-transferable. That's something that you'd like to, as a group, as a planning commission, um, advance as a part of this. I, I, I don't think there's anything illegal about that, right?
No, 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 there's nothing. So, yeah, if the, if the commission wishes to make that as a sort of a requirement or to look at not allowing them to have any grace period should the, it lapse, um, that would be something that our office, we could work with planning and and draft that. Should that be the recommendation tonight? And then that, the council could consider that at the hearing.
I would like to make that recommendation.
I, I, I agree.
Okay. Uh, Kelly?
Yeah.
Kelly, do we need, do we need to make a motion to approve this amendment to the uh findings and conditions?
Ye- yes, Commissioner Crump, yes, when you make, if you were to make such a motion, you would make it when you make item number three to amend it. And then maybe give specific um language, it sounds like you're saying. Uh, we can work with that, but yeah, you would make a motion to that, that that would be forwarded to the city council as a motion to consider amending the ordinance to be specific onto grandfathering or lapsing of the permit or non-transferability. That's correct. Thank you.
During the, during the top points, okay, got it. Um, so if there's, I guess, no more comments from the commissioners, then we would have to open to public hearing first, right?
Right, correct. Open the public hearing. And then when you're making your motions, we would just amend it as, as you stated.
Okay. Um, is there any comments from public?
We have never raised hands.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then at this part, Kelly, you're saying, um, is there a motion to amend the adopted findings as outlined?
That's correct. You can make it now when you're making the motion to adopt the findings.
Uh, adopt the finding, oh, make, so
As amended.
As amended to include um non-transferable license or zero base period.
Yes.
That's the recommendation to the council.
That's correct. Thank you.
That's the motion.
Okay, that's the motion I seconded then.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And then next, is there a motion to affirm the environmental assessment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and then is there a motion to recommend approval of zone change, ZC zero-one-two-two-one-five-four-seven-seven?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
I'll do the roll call. Crump?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Corano?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye. And then what's next?
That's it. Those are the only two standard items.
Those are only two, uh, so I guess, um, if there's any other comments or concerns, nothing?
Well done, Madam Chairman.
You did well.
Very good.
Those are motions adjourned tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Back in.
I would like to just say if we could adjourn on behalf of the Ukrainian uh country, the people and what's happening and just in solidarity, you know, to stand behind, you know, what's happening for the people. So that's what I'd like to do. If that's okay with you guys.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job, Elba.
Yeah, good job.
Well done.
Good job.
Yeah, nice.
Did well.
Take care, everybody.
All right, take care. Thank you.
All right, good night, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Thanks.
Bye.